We are on the record.
All right. Thank you very much. Good afternoon. The appellate court for the state of Connecticut is back in session. For the record, we are conducting this hearing virtually via Teams and are live streaming this hearing on YouTube. Counselor advised that to the extent that there is statutorily protected parties and or information here that you please take care not to reveal any protected information. I would ask that everyone participating in the hearing identify themselves, starting with the judges, then counsel for the appellant, and finally counsel for the appellee. I am Judge Elgo.
Judge Alexander.
Judge Sheldon, I believe you're muted.
Brave new world. Judge Sheldon.
Counsel attorney Kleiger, I believe you're also muted. Attorney Kleiger, you are muted. Can you unmute yourself before? You're still muted. We can't hear you. There you are.
Okay. Attorney Kleiger for the appellant. I'm Attorney Penske's law firm.
All right. Thank you very much.
Good afternoon. Attorney Keith Rudzik from Howard Cone Spring and Fitzgerald for the appellees.
All right. Thank you. Counsel, prior to this argument, you did receive procedural instructions for this hearing. Are there any questions before we begin? All right.
No, you're up.
All right, seeing none. For the record, I do note that I can hear and see everyone. Please let us know if in the course of your argument, you are experiencing any difficulties hearing or seeing the participants. All right. And if you should lose your video capability, please log out and log back in, and then we will take a pause in the proceedings so that you, so that matter can be corrected. All participants must keep their video on and remain in view out of respect for the process and the other participants. All participants are also asked to keep your microphones off and muted when you are not speaking. The judges will raise their hand if they have a question, though if you for some reason do not see them, we will interrupt you. Also, please keep in mind that while this is a virtual hearing, all participants are expected to conduct themselves with the same formality and respect for the process as you would in our courtroom. Each side will be permitted 20 minutes of argument. The appellant may reserve a portion of that time for rebuttal and should advise me before you begin how much, if any, time is requested. Judge Alexander will be our timekeeper and give you a two-minute warning and also when your time is up. So we are now hearing the matter of, I believe it's Kalute or Kalut versus Glastonbury. And the appellant, counsel, you may proceed.
Will the court wish a statement of the facts?
However you would like to proceed, counsel.
Okay. Essentially, this is an action involving res judicata. First action was against Glastonbury Board of Education, the school superintendent, Glastonbury High School principal, Glastonbury High Athletic Director, and a Glastonbury High School football coach. It was brought on behalf of the then minor Gabriel Kalut, who was a member of the Glastonbury High School football team. And during the 2016-2017 season, the allegations in the first action were that he sustained repeated head trauma in the course of participating in the football program, which repeated head trauma resulted in a brain injury. The first action had a myriad number of counts, due process deprivation, civil retroaction, battery, fraud, and negligence. Allegations included a failure to disclose the inadequacy of current helmets used and current equipment used, a failure to inform the student and parents of mounting evidence that CTE, chronic traumatic encephalopathy, has been found a result in football players, people who have experienced repeated trauma to the head. A motion is no specific times during the football season or no specific events were alleged, simply that he was hit repeatedly while participating in football, and that as far as we knew, the head trauma was cumulative, resulted cumulatively. That action was dismissed. There was a motion to strike. The motion to strike was argued. The motion to strike was granted. The entire complaint was granted in its entirety on January 3 of 2018. We brought a second action, action two. That action was against the same parties. There was one substitution. We had come to find out in the interim that it was a different coach that was conducting the practice, the football practice involved in the second action. In the second action, we had alleged a specific factual background, an event occurring specifically on October 20 of 2016. It was a full-contact practice session at the school. The minor plaintiff, Gabriel Kalut, had injuries at that time to his hamstring, his leg, and normally he was a wide receiver. The coach wanted him to, knowing that he had prior injuries, wanted him to try out the running back position, knowing that that's a position which involves significant and frequent contact. Gabriel took a handoff from the quarterback, started running. He was hit violently by a defender who put his helmet into Gabriel's body, into Gabriel's shoulder, knocking Gabriel to the ground where Gabriel hit his shoulder and his head on the ground. The allegations in the second complaint are that Gabriel suffered, he lost his consciousness. When he regained his consciousness, he began walking to the sidelines. He claims that the coach, or alleges that the coach had seen all of this, and yet the coach did not take him out of the game, did not ask him how he was, allowed Gabriel to go back into the game, although Gabriel was not feeling well. He was feeling dizzy and disoriented. He went back into the game, continued with the drills. His parents were never notified of this. Some days later, things got worse. His mother took him to see the school nurse. The school nurse looked at him and said, shoulder sprain. Nothing else. Doesn't need any further medical attention. Turns out that Gabriel had a severe and worsening concussion, and that he had a hairline fracture in his shoulder. The second action was predicated on both negligence and recklessness, based on noncompliance with the State Department of Education Concussion Education Plan and the requirements therein. That concussion plan appears at A282 of our index. But the key provisions that were not, at least we allege, were not complied with. Number one, the school, through a qualified representative, had to inform Gabriel's parents immediately of any actual or suspected concussion. They didn't do so. If they couldn't reach Gabriel's parents immediately, they had to contact his parents within 24 hours following Gabriel's removal from the game. The coach didn't remove him from the game when he should have and never contacted Gabriel's parents. Also, Gabriel's parents pursuant to the concussion education plan were supposed to receive training either online, written, or in some electronic form, or in person regarding how do I identify a concussion. They never received that. The coach also failed to tell any medical personnel at the school, including the school nurse, what had happened to Gabriel. The coach did not ask Gabriel if he was all right. The coach did not ask Gabriel if he wanted medical help. The coach did not ask Gabriel if he wanted to go to the hospital. The coach said absolutely nothing to Gabriel about the incident, although again, the pleading alleges that the coach saw it all, watched it all, and should have done something. Gabriel got progressively worse. Later on in time, Gabriel needed accommodations, special accommodations because of his head injury. And the doctors made some requests, and Gabriel's mother, the plaintiff, April Kalut, made some requests to the school regarding accommodations. And some things were not granted, and some things were not granted right away. But the real problem--
Counsel, if I may interrupt, perhaps we, I could direct you to address some of the legal issues with respect to the res judicata determination by the trial court, and if you could address some of the factors that the court addressed essentially becoming the basis for its grant of summary judgment here.
Okay. There were four matters that the court considered initially, whether the judgment had been rendered on the merits by a court of competent jurisdiction. The motion to strike and us not filing a revised complaint at that time, we didn't, we didn't really argue that and agree that the judgment was rendered on the merits. The second issue was parties to the first and second actions. Were they privy? Well, all five were the same parties, except, well, all were the same parties except for the football coaches. In the first action, we had mistakenly thought that Coach One had conducted the practice. We later came to find out it was Coach Two, so we substituted Coach Two into the second action. The third issue, and one which is very important to us, was we felt that we did not have an adequate opportunity to litigate the matter fully and fairly. And that forms a significant basis to our claim in the second action. The trial court felt we did--
Counsel, counsel, I believe Judge Sheldon has a question.
Okay. Sir, on that subject, it appears that your client says that he would not divulge information about this one practice. He didn't say he couldn't. He said he wouldn't, right?
Well, he refused to. He was never asked.
No.
He was--
He said he wouldn't, correct? In his affidavit, that's what he says on summary judgment. He says he would not.
About it. He was reluctant to talk about it under fear of bullying and so forth.
All right. So I'm going to read to you paragraph 11 and ask you a question about it. This is the affidavit by Gabriel. He says, "I did not get as much tutoring and assistance, organizing as I needed, and nothing was done proactively to limit or prevent the harassment and bullying I was receiving at school." My question to you is, is any part of your claim in this action that school officials were advised of and failed to remedy the bullying, and as a result of that, he was unable or unwilling to come forward with the information in the suit? Is that all a part of your claim?
No. The school officials said that to Gabriel's mother, "Have Gabriel tell us when there is bullying, and we'll deal with it." Gabriel, however, was afraid. He had been bullied. He had been beaten. He had been hearing stories from other classmates that students were waiting for him, and they were going to beat him, and he didn't squeal and would not tell.
Okay. So you're not, if I may--
I'm sorry.
Mr. Kleiger, Mr. Kleiger, so that means that you are not assigning any fault to the Board of Education or to any of these defendants, all of whom are sued in their official capacity, for failing to respond to a complaint about bullying, which in turn resulted in his unwillingness to speak. That's, that is, it's a fact. It's a sad fact, but it's not a fact for which you're blaming Glastonbury, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
They did offer to deal with the bullying. Gabriel was afraid to reveal the identities of those doing the bullying. Again, on the third item, they must have been an adequate opportunity to litigate the matter fully and fairly. We're alleging here that there was not. At the time in the first action, we didn't know about the specific facts of October 20 of 2018, again, because Gabriel did not discuss them, but also significantly because the, the school never notified Gabriel's parents, never told them, and never went through the things I've already indicated. Notifying the parents within 24 hours. The parents were never given any materials or face-to-face discussion on recognizing the symptoms of a concussion and how to deal with it. And it wasn't until Gabriel graduated from school, and even then with some prodding, was willing to discuss it with his mother and his attorneys. But there, there is an additional part to the claimant in the second action, and that's that the school and its willingness and response to providing educational accommodations. There were times when they did provide them. There were other times when they took a great deal of time to provide them and provided them in part. But the real problem for Gabriel comes in approximately January 17, January 18 of 2018. A series of emails, which are in the appendix, between April Kalut and Ms. Herworth from the high school, about Gabriel's midterm exams and his tutoring and breaks. What was requested was a breakdown in lessons into smaller chunks because Gabriel was having trouble absorbing and digesting the material as it was presented. He needed tutors for that. He needed additional tutoring. He needed more class breaks because of his post concussion triggers still recurring. And were you to look at the email sequence as appears in A167, starts at A166 and appears at A167 of our appendix, the scheduling of his midterm exams was just, just brutal. I mean, I shuddered at having to take an exam schedule like that. He had multiple exams. He had an exam almost every day within a five-day period. He had class projects due. He had reports due, all within a five-day period. He had, on one day, he had tutoring from 7:45 to 9:45. Then at 9:45, he had to take an algebra exam, and then he could have some tutoring after for exam the following day. But that scheduling was, in my opinion, his mother's opinion, a resource schedule. It was much too burdensome for somebody with his injury. And these were midterm exams. And they were pretty much left that way, and they caused tremendous pressures to Gabriel. And our claim is that they exacerbated things. They prevented his recovery. Now, these, these things of January 2018 occurred after the motion to strike was granted in the first action, approximately 13 days after, which if we had jumped on it immediately, would have left us with two days pursuant to Practice Book 10, I believe 10-44, would have left us with two days to file a substitute pleading, which was, as a practical sense, we couldn't do. His mother got that email on the 17th, but we didn't see it until later. In any event, what we're saying is that part of Gabriel's injury and part of his problems, part of his inability to heal from this terrible concussion, was that he was put under a lot of pressure with his exam schedule and the tutoring and the speed with which the material was coming at him and the volume at which the material was coming at him. And that these events occurred after the motion to strike in the first action was granted.
Counsel, counsel, you have just over a minute left to wrap up, just so you know. Thank you.
Now, with respect to the earlier claims, again, it must have been an adequate opportunity to litigate the matter fully. And it's not simply a question of, we didn't know about something that existed at the outset of the first suit. If you, if you look at page four of our brief, about halfway down, we indicate it should be noted that the defendants are also responsible for the unavailability of this information, as they never notified Gabriel's parents of the events of October 20 of 2016. Count 18 of the second, against the coach, indicates also a conscious decision on his part to not inform the parents in the recklessness count. In other words, what we're saying here is there's something more involved than us not having the information early and getting it later. There seems to be a concealment on the part of the defendants, a withholding of that information from us. And I think that changes the things, or should change the thing.
All right. Counsel, I believe your time is up. All right. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Counsel, before you start, I neglected to do one thing. One of the named defendants has the same last name as the court. I just want to put on the record that it is not a relative or anyone related to the court, just so it's clear for the plaintiffs as well. Okay? Thank you.
All right. Well, thank you very much, Judge Alexander. Attorney Rudzik.
Thank you, Judge. May it please the court. As you know, my name is Keith Rudzik, and I represent the Glastonbury Board of Education and the administrators and coaches that were in effect or in place the football season from 2016 to 2017. We're here today on the appellant's appeal of a motion for summary judgment that was granted on res judicata grounds. Essentially, the way I view this is the appellant are trying to relitigate claims concerning a single injury-producing event, a concussion that was sustained in October 20 of 2016, and the administrators and coaches' failure to appropriately respond to that concussion when they already had an opportunity to raise these issues and in fact, raised the similar issues in a lawsuit that contained allegations of repeat trauma over the entire course of the 2016-2017 football season. The one thing that I probably didn't make clear, but it's probably clear to the judges, Judge Shapiro is the one who granted the motion to strike in the original case, the first action. He's the one that ruled on the motion for reconsideration. And he's also the one who ruled on the motion for judgment in the underlying case. He had a wealth of information as to what was being claimed, and he also is the one who made a decision on this summary judgment that res judicata should apply. The appellees are asking the court to affirm the trial court's cogent and reasoned judgment because they, he properly applied res judicata to the claims in the second lawsuit. What it seems to me is that the plaintiffs are trying to circumvent the Jaworski versus Kiernan case, that it has to be something more than just mere negligence to charge either co-participants or coaches with injuries that occur in a voluntary sport that involves contact and hitting and possibility of injuries. And to do that, Judge Shapiro had indicated in his memorandum of decision that mere negligence isn't enough. You need to allege recklessness or intentional conduct. So there's that aspect of this second lawsuit that I think the plaintiffs are trying to adhere to. And then also, they're trying to use the excuse that there was factual unavailability as to when this specific incident happened to save their claims. The whole purpose of res judicata is to prevent relitigation of the same issues between the same parties, promote judicial economy and finality in judgments. So the overarching rule is that a final judgment rendered on the merits is conclusive of any and all causes of actions or facts or issues litigated between the parties and their privies, and that such judgment is a bar with respect to any claims relating to that cause of action that were made or could have been made by the parties. And attorney Kleiger, I believe, went through what the elements were, and it seems that they're not claiming that there wasn't a prior judgment on the merits. I think he conceded that oral argument as well. I'm not sure what his position is on the privy issue, but the, the two different coaches in place are basically functional equivalents. The Ventris versus Goodspeed Airport case is almost on point, that they're both agents of the municipality. They're not acting on their own behalf. They're acting on behalf of the municipality, and functionally, they operated the same. One was the coach of the varsity football team. One was the coach of the junior varsity football team. So I believe the first two elements of res judicata apply. The third one is the one that I think that attorney Kleiger has mentioned as the critical one. And the way I view it, and from the cases that I've seen, the appellant had an opportunity to litigate all of these claims. And what I was hearing today, an argument indeed, is that they, they knew about it before the time to replead was, was, was over. They could have repled the claims that they had to, one, try to circumvent Jaworski versus Kiernan and the import of that case, and two, to raise these claims that they said they didn't know about pertaining to the accommodations issue. So they had knowledge from at least January of 2017 to February of 2018, when the judgment entered, to raise issues. They could have amended their complaint at any point in time before that to add these claims. They could have-- They could have, uh, and, and, and just so we're all on the same page, there's been cases, uh, Powell versus Infinity comes to mind where it was a straightforward car accident case, uh, with uninsured motorist benefits. And the claim was litigated for a couple of years. And then there was a contention that the insurance company was acting in bad faith. The court would not allow that claim to be brought separately. Instead said, "That should have been brought as part of the underlying case." Um, because that is something, uh, that you could have done and it would have related back. And it is symmetrical with the relation back doctrine and for rest judicata purposes for claims that could have been made. Um, so the, the, the appellate's had the opportunity to, like I said, to amend the complaint anytime. They did in fact, object to the motion to strike, filed a memorandum of law, attended all the arguments, filed a motion to reargue, reconsider, um, had an opportunity to object to the motion for judgment, had an opportunity to appeal that judgment and then withdrew that appeal. The Tarazi versus Shelby Insurance Company case is almost directly on point with, with this one in, in terms of saying that that's an adequate opportunity to litigate. I understand from Attorney Klieger's arguments today that there's an issue with respect to factual unavailability. Um, I, I look at Judge Shapiro's decision and, and he does address that. And he actually assumes that, for purposes of the motion, that that is true, that the, the information may have been factually unavailable. Uh, and this is on appendix 231 at the bottom. You know, he assumes that it's true, um, and into appendix page 232, assuming that the plaintiffs truthfully did not have certain factual information surrounding the specific incident that year. The Connecticut law doesn't allow him to circumvent the doctrine of rest judicata simply because he, it was unavailable. And I think Judge Sheldon had mentioned that it wasn't so much that it was unavailable, it was that he didn't want to disclose it. He, he purposefully withheld it. And I, and I think the record that is before the court actually supports the position that the information was factually available, a- aside from Mr. Kulot's, um, purposeful withholding of the information. Um, the, in the, uh, complaint itself, in the second action, the appellate's alleged that after practice on that specific date, October 28th, 2016, April Kulot noted that his, he was walking clumsily with, uh, uh, an awkward gait. And he, and she noticed that immediately after practice. She also noticed that his pain was getting progressively worse. Two days later, so I would bring it to October 30th, 2016, she had him checked out by the nurse. A few more days later, she had him checked out, uh, by an orthopedic doctor. And the orthopedic doctor told him he had fractured his shoulder and had concussion-type symptoms. And starting in January of 2017, there were concerns with the accommodations. And so, all of these things happened well within the time that the case was pending. Uh, they may not have been available to the plaintiffs at the time they initially filed their complaint. But certainly before, uh, the, the motion to strike was granted, there was plenty of time to amend and, and add these allegations. Um, with respect to other issues, um, the courts have always abided by the transactional test when determining whether this is a claim that was made or could have been raised in the prior action. So preclusion will apply even if new or different evidence is being offered, even if new legal theories are being advanced, even if the full extent of the plaintiff's injuries or scopes of damages had not developed or are not fully developed, and even if you're seeking different remedies or forms of relief. Um, so the, the preclusion is all rights to the plaintiffs against the defense with respect to any or all of the transaction, series of connected transaction out of which the original action arose. And so, I, I don't think it's hard to imagine a situation with Venn diagrams and, and, and subsets and things like that where this specific concussion-producing event had to have occurred in that 2016 to 2017 timeframe that was the subject of the first complaint. Um, it all arose out of the same type of activity, it all arose out of football. It all arose out of the response to the concussions by the administrators, the following of the concussion protocol. All of these things were, were part of the original case. Now, and I'll note, Your Honors, that in the original complaint, the first action, the, the appellate's sought equitable relief to prevent further injury and harm. And part of the concussion protocols that are attached to the appendix is that you need to have educational accommodations because concussions are affect in a student's ability to learn and, and an individual's approach with accommodations may be necess- may be necessary. And so, it's very important to the accommodations issue that they sought equitable relief in that original complaint. So if, even if nothing further was said about, uh, whether or not they could have brought these educational accommodations claim, it was part of their, their relief. And the court, in that original case, first action, if it had gotten to trial, the plaintiffs would have been able to put on evidence of the, the injuries, the concussion, the impact of the concussion on, on the child's development in school and in life, um, what accommodations the school was making, what accommodations the school wasn't making and how these things were affecting how he lived with these injuries. And so, I, I, I don't think there's a, a, a real credible argument that these types of actions, um, weren't covered by that initial cause of action that was eventually stricken. The, the last issue that Attorney Klieger didn't get to had to do with balancing the-